Probably just fine. I can say that because it's hot, come on the counter.
Who's, who just gave us the warning? Jim with that hand back there?
What did you?
Just one minute, who gave us the one minute warning? You?
I'm sitting here minding my own business. Like I always do.
Hmm, I find that hard to believe.
Okay, at 6:00 PPM, we will call the March 13th Chippewa County Board Meeting. Order, stand for the Fudge of Legion and moment of silence.
The Legion is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Roll call shows nineteen supervisors present, two absent supervisors Hunt and Ives.
Approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Omar moves, is there a second? So Meyer, sir, a second. Roll Meyer. We'll move on to members of the public wishing to be heard. Excuse me, we better vote for this, huh? Push the button, green to approve. You're telling me I gotta be out of here by nine, so. Okay, open.
Nineteen yes, zero no.
Okay, agenda is approved. Now we'll go to members of the public wishing to be heard. And you will have five minutes. Okay. Charlie Parker, it's your first.
Hi, I'm Charlie Parker, I'm a member of the Eagle Point ATV Club. I'm here to address some of the stuff that's on item number nine in your, in your packet there during, concerning the ATV routes. Anyway, I'm part of the Eagle Point Club, been there for fifteen years as a club representative and also a representative of the Chippewa ATV Council. And since it began, I've been on that. Served as vice president to both at different times. Our club has helped in the township of Tilden, Bloomer, Woodmore, and the city of Bloomer with paying for and installing route signs along with other club members from municipality. Plus, we've raised lots of money for different nonprofits throughout our years of doing this. So, Jim Flader has been pretty instrumental on getting this new agenda item here together, the ordinance for repeal and recreate. I would like to thank the Highway Committee for working, I mean, they, they worked pretty hard on this. And it covers pretty much all the legal safety concerns that everybody had on behalf of opening up the routes to ATVs. So on behalf of all the club members, the community businesses, and myself, I'd like to encourage to pass this revised ordinance. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Paul Kremenauer.
Good evening, Paul Kremenauer from Chippewa Valley ATV Council. First of all, I want to thank all of you, especially the ones that are retiring and miss you. I've enjoyed working with most of you, or the ones that I have, and it's been a real opportunity for me. The Highway Committee and the Highway Department has worked in length on this ATV change, you know, ordinance. And I would like to talk about it a little bit. I was told the Highway Department has spent over three hundred hours working on this. And reviewing the safety aspects of our highway and the relationship with allowing ATVs and UTVs on use our county highways. They wanted to open the highways with only a count of five hundred cars per day or less. And we asked them to raise that. It was, Highway Committee approved daily count of seven hundred and fifty after a motion of thousand daily count was failed. And so, we are, we would really like to see this go on. But the seven hundred and fifty car count, we will raise our number of road miles up to three hundred and twenty-six, about that, county highways, plus four hundred miles of, four hundred plus miles of town roads within Chippewa County. Gives us over seven hundred and twenty-some miles of road, roads to use, plus the twenty-three miles of some of the best trails in, in the state. And so that's why we're really looking at trying to improve and increase this numbers. As of December twenty, December thirty-first, there were eleven thousand five hundred and fifty-eight ATVs, UTVs registered in Chippewa County. So with these route openings, it should be with win for everyone involved. I personally do not like, see us compared with other counties, as each county can be so different. Even within Chippewa County, the demographics are so different from north to the south. We also hear about other states allow all of their roads to be open to the ATVs use. The difference with these states is that it's mandated by the state, not by the counties. We haven't persuaded the state to take over this. And hopefully someday that might happen. That would take a lot of the responsibility off the counties and townships. So, with that said, I encourage you to pass the ordinance. Changes of the Highway Committee as proposed to you tonight. Appreciate your help. And again, thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you. And that's it. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ron McGill.
Second.
And Dave Eisenhuth, second. Okay, any discussion? Here, none, then push your green to approve, red to disapprove.
Nineteen yes, zero no.
Agenda passes. Okay, number seven, public hearings on twenty-five, twenty-nine county library plan of service. Public hearing. Our clerk will introduce their speakers.
To speak on the proposed library plan, we will have the Chippewa Falls Library Director, Joniz, and then from the IFLIS, John Thompson. And then for the county board, when we get to the resolution, if you have questions, that's where we'll have the questions at that point. After they give their presentation, there is a member of the public that will speak as well.
Okay.
Good evening. Thanks for discussing the Chippewa County Library Plan. I do want to thank everyone for being here this evening. I'd also like to thank John for his help with this, as well as members of the board, the library board, several library directors that are here this evening, so thank you. I'm in your packet, you did get the plan. We'll go through the slides here. So that's a list of the committee members, the directors of, from the library, citizen members, as well as Jackie, the county clerk. What's in the twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-nine Chippewa County Library Plan? We had three meetings that were held last week, shared with the Executive Committee, and then the presentation to the board. Why does the county need a plan? It's part of a state statute for funding. Some of the planned elements were the inventory of services, required funding, priorities and strategies, implementation, and updating and amending that plan. Again, these are inventory of services that were in your, your packet there. So the big piece of this is the funding. The plan seeks to increase funding to one hundred percent by increasing percentage by two percent each year effective with the twenty-twenty-five budget year. Just to spell that out a little bit, the increase in funding for the five Chippewa County libraries from, from ninety to ninety-two percent would cost fifteen thousand six hundred and eight. Increasing it from ninety to a hundred over those five years would be a seventy-eight thousand forty dollar increase. County library taxes outside the county's levy limit. Can you hear those numbers?
These numbers just reflect the five libraries that are in Chippewa County solely. Eau Claire has a portion of their city within the county as well, so those numbers are also included in the appropriation that you see from the county. But this gives you a rough idea of how it's calculated. It's based on the total operational expenditures of the library minus any federal funds that they would have received, divided by the total circulation of the library, and then it's multiplied by the use by folks within Chippewa County that do not have a library within their area. So all the, the cities that have libraries, those folks are not included in this, but all the towns and other municipalities without libraries are included in that number for Chippewa County. So it gives you a rough idea of what that is. The cost per circulation does vary by library because of staffing levels, open hours, usage, all of those things have an impact on that cost per circ.
Looking at our priorities, our priority provide equitable access to library services to all residents of Chippewa County, maintain the relevance of the plan of library services, and the directors will communicate and cooperate effectively in old meetings, at least annually on a rotating location basis. Again, our priorities, the residents of the county will continue to be made aware of the scope of their library services and encourage all libraries to achieve compliance with the tier-one level standards as set forth by the Wisconsin Public Library Standards. County will support the funding obligation of municipalities for all public libraries within the county and may adjust funding support based upon local decisions made and/or actions taken by library boards and other municipalities. Yeah, that's a list of the directors. Chippewa County Public Library, sharing new experiences learning with county residents. So these are the five libraries in the county. And it's just a list of some of the important activities that were done in the last year. I don't need to, if, I can read that out loud if you'd like me to, or if you, uh... I should point out that Cornell joined the Moore system after years of not being a part of that, so I'm happy that all five county libraries are now part of the Moore system. Some visuals to go along with. These snapshot numbers, I think, are pretty telling on the importance of the libraries in the county here. Oftentimes, those libraries are the most heavily used municipal buildings in the city. This is looking ahead, what the libraries have planned for the coming year and years to come. There's that link to the library funding and planning.
Okay. The IFLIS library system is a member-driven organization that is supported by state funding. We serve ten counties and fifty-three public libraries. Most of the work that we do is behind the scenes. Our biggest, public-facing service is the more catalog that the public gets to use to place, holds on materials and have them shipped to any one of the fifty-three libraries within our region. We also have a, Chippewa Valley Technical College is part of the consortium as well, so their materials are also shared within that region. We serve roughly eight thousand square miles. We are one of the largest systems within the state. We, we try to focus on making the libraries that we serve better. So, all of, the vast majority of our services are free to the libraries. There are a couple that are in partnership, our system is in partnership with the libraries, so it's a cost shared. And then there are a few things that we do for them on a cost recovery basis, some of the, for example, we have a group supply order. We just received five pallets of library supplies that we'll be redistributing to the libraries. We've saved about thirty percent for the libraries within that group order. So we're trying to make sure that the resources that the libraries have go farther than what they can do individually. So that's our main focus as a library system. And we're, we're here to help individual municipalities, their boards, the county, any library-related questions, we're here to help folks with that. That's kind of a map of where we are. And that's a map of the fifteen library system. And this is a little bit more about us. We do have a twenty-person board that oversees the operations of the library system. Appointed by individual county boards with representation from either supervisors or citizens of the counties. And Jim is the county rep on this board. And here's a listing of the services that we have available. And we'll certainly answer any questions for the county board during the resolution approval process.
Yep. And we have one, wait for you, one member of the public wishing to be heard, Mary Ann King.
I am Mary Ann King, I'm a resident of the, what used to be the third ward of Chippewa County. I'm not sure yet exactly all how that goes, but anyway, the original third ward. I'm probably one of the most frequent users of our, of our library locally. I've spent a lot of time there getting books and observing some of the children's activities that go on there. The library has many, many things for children and youth and parents who come in. They also have adult services and frequently services for someone who has hair like this. So, we, we really enjoy the library. The library is not only books. One of the things that is a major provision of, of many of the libraries is the availability of computers. In spite of the expansion of broadband across the county, there are still people who are without access to either computers or the high-speed internet. And there are many, many people using the computers daily to apply for jobs, look up medical information, and other activities, but I think that's a major portion of what is provided. The service, the services that are available with the library, books, CDs, the computers, one of the things that we don't think about is, several groups I'm in, we're always looking for someplace to have an evening meeting, and there's not much available, and this is one thing that I don't think people think about, is having the library available with space for people to be able to gather and, and just have a meeting. And I just think the, again, to the importance of the library as a gathering place for the city, city and the county. And I would stress that they mentioned the county libraries. All of the libraries are available to all Chippewa County citizens. And we certainly would appreciate your support as you consider this. And in closing, I would exercise the comment earlier, I sat in that chair for, one of those chairs for eight years as a county board member, and I certainly thank all of you who are retiring, and the ones who are staying, I guess, too, but thank you for, for being able to serve the community.
Thank you. No one else? Okay. That would then close our public hearing on the library. And we'll move on to reports, general reports, recognition of county board supervisors.
I know I saw some of you walk in today with very big smiles on your face, and that's fine, I guess. But on all of your desks, there should be a certificate just thanking you for your service for the last two years. We really appreciate everything that you have done. And for those of you that are, this is your last meeting, goodbye, and thank you. For those of you that are coming back next month, because you're unopposed, we'll welcome you back. And for those of you that have some competition, good luck to all of you.
Okay. With that, for those of you who are leaving, I would open up for any comments, and I'll start with Dave Eisenhuth, would you like to say anything?
I'm with the president working on the board, you know, I appreciate working with all you guys and stuff like that, so. I will be leaving, but I'm sure somebody will fill my shoes. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Ron McGill.
Well, I'd just like to say thanks to all of these guys, all our SU board members. I want to think that we've done some good for the community, and I would just hope that maybe some younger people or some elderly people that are retiring and got some spare time on their hands, run for the county board and represent your local community. Thank you.
Roger?
It's been very, very learning process. I know I'm done after this one, but there's a lot involved that people don't understand and don't know. And it takes everybody together working on it to make it work, so, so thank everybody, and I'll be golfing next month.
Glenn Skarsky.
Yeah, been on here twelve years. Been a good experience. I'm really proud of the way the county has got ourselves in such a strong financial position. That was kind of something I really wanted to watch, and please keep it going. It's, we need to be financially strong like that. We're our own county, don't look at other counties for guidance. Again, be our own counties, and hopefully people will pick up after me. Thank you.
Buck Steal.
Thanks, no. It was an honor representing the people from my district. I have a brand-new district just about. I've really met a lot of new people, and I enjoy what I'm doing. But there's certain times that you have to make a decision. And I think it's, my decision was let some other set of eyes look at it. And also, I believe in term limits. I think I've been here long enough. I think you're getting tired of here, I mean. Here we go. Thank you, everybody.
I'll save my remarks for right at the end, but I want to thank each and every one of you. You've been a tremendous asset to this board, and let's give a round of applause. Okay, we move on to business items. Okay, Resolution nine twenty-four.
Resolution nine dash twenty-four, resolution to approve the Chippewa County Plan of Library Service twenty-two-five to twenty-two-nine. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby approve and adopt the attached Chippewa County Plan of Library Service twenty-two-five to twenty-two-nine, and be it further resolved that, that Chippewa County shall reimburse the county libraries at the current rate of ninety percent in twenty-two-four, plus an additional two percent annual increase commencing in twenty-two-five for the duration of the twenty-two-five to twenty-two-nine plan, and be it further resolved that municipal library boards of trustees may increase or decrease their board size pursuant to Wisconsin statutes forty-three point five-four, print one, print A, and forty-three point five-four, print three, and be it further resolved that the county clerk shall forward a copy of the plan and this resolution to the Division of Libraries and Technology in the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction forwarded to the county board by the Executive Committee.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Eric, so you'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I've got some questions for the gentleman that gave the presentation. So, I apologize ahead of time if these are irrelevant questions, but I'm kind of new here, and I have to be, you know, brought up to speed. And with that, I also want to mention that I am a proponent of library. My questions are, five-year budgetary plan, does that include everything including salaries?
It, it includes all the operational expenses for the libraries, salaries, library materials, utilities, building maintenance, those types of expenses.
So is there a contingency for some odd increase in costs? Let's say, cost of heating the building goes skyrocketing? How does that get handled? How does that get handled?
So, the, each municipal library's budget is comprised of two main points. One would be the municipal funding and then the county funding. So, this is a portion of the individual library's funding. So, depending on the ratio, some, some will fund like 75% from municipality, 25% from the county, others might be 50-50 split. And so whatever lump sum revenue the library has, it will then divide that out to make adjustments to their operational costs. So, they work within the budget parameters that they have. So, the, once the budget's set, they have to deal with whatever surprises may come up during the year.
So, is there a common denominator on the circulation cost between the five libraries that they're so different? Is there a cause there or what, what's that affect?
Some, some of, for example, Chippewa Falls would, would have more full-time staff, so their benefit cost will be higher than a library that has multiple part-time employees with no benefits. So, there, there is a variation there. It, part of it depends on the size of the community, size of the building. You know, Chippewa Falls has a building that's two stories. They'll need to have staff that can support that. Kadat has two floors within their building, so they have to have staff to support that versus maybe having a little less staff in a one-story building. The age of the buildings have impact on the utility costs. Most of the buildings within the county are relatively old, library speaking. 20 years is about the life cycle of a library when they start looking at doing renovations and, and new planning. There are a couple of libraries that are looking at that. Hopefully they'll be more energy efficient as they move forward. But they're dealing with infrastructure that's old, so all of those things have an impact on cost.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My favorite part of reading the resolutions is the financial impact portion. And I'm having a hard time putting a finger on this specifically. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but 70% is the minimum mandated by statute to be contributed, correct?
Correct.
And so, the, the ask here is an incremental increase over the four-year time period to ratchet that up to 100%?
It, it's a, it's a, yeah, over the next five years, the plan would go up from 90 to 100%, which is consistent with the plan that was just expired.
Okay.
It was a 2% increase over those years as well.
So, the expiring plan mirrored this current plan?
Correct.
And then on top of that, is, I don't want to say moving target, but do we know, like, ballpark what these numbers could be down the line? Because what I worry about is we're spending dollars now that would have a drastic change in '26, '27, '28, '29. Is it, I don't know how this affects our future budget, is what I'm saying.
The, the variables within this equation are the total expenditures, the total circulation, and then the use by those folks that live outside of areas with libraries. Any one of those variables can change it up or down and, in, in some cases significantly so. COVID would be a good example. Circulation was lower. The operational costs were a little higher because circ was down. That had an impact on the budget. But the, the flexibility you have as a county board is, this tax is outside the levy limits. So, the, the amount that increases, while it impacts property tax, does not impact other county services that you have to fit within the county's levy limits.
Okay. Okay. So, that, that, that puts a little clarity to it. I guess the last question I have then is what, and maybe this is an impossible question to answer, what's the possibility of this from year to year doubling the number that we have to look at from a county perspective?
Most of the changes are incremental. You know, I think it was a $15,000 swing this way. Generally, it's a 15 to $20,000 swing.
We're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars here from year to year to year over year?
No.
And what I can tell you, because I handle the budget for the libraries every year for the county, and actually what, what we budgeted for 2023 was lower than what we have paid, what we paid in 2022.
Okay.
So, some, some years there may be an increase, some years there might be a decrease.
Do you?
But it has not been a large.
Ballpark, what is that number for 2023?
I think, oh, I don't, so this last year we paid, so like on the bottom here that has like the historical average, that 882,000, I don't, I don't have that right here in front of me. Do you?
I didn't even see Laurie's number.
But I mean, it's right around, I think it was right around 900,000 that we, oh, it was like 898, I think.
Five years, Stanley owes us $4,000 over five years.
Over five years. Okay. We're not talking astronomical figures.
You don't have, I'll talk.
Oh, here, let's hang on. Tracy, can you bring up exhibit A in the, from the, in the packet? That one, yeah. I think it's.
Okay.
So, this shows like the la, this is what the estimate would be based on the numbers that we got from last year. So, you can see it goes up.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, yeah, the eighty, ninety-three.
Eighty.
Eight hundred ninety-three, yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Jim, did you have something you were going to say? Because you may answer my questions.
Well, I'm, you can go ahead. I'm in the last one line. All what I was going to say is that you were talking about things that can blow up your budget. And I'm also on the library board in Stanley. And I think it was about three, four years ago, we had a furnace go out right at the end of the year, right at the end of the budget time. And, you know, had to have heat. The city of Stanley came through, paid for it, and then we were able to adjust it out of our next year's budget, you know, so it gave us that year to work on it. And then seeing the number here, Stanley will increase by about $4,000 over the entire life of this. And it, it doesn't have major fluctuations. It just, it just doesn't. And the other thing you got to do is make sure to hire a good library director. Other than that, you don't have any problems.
I still have a question.
All right, go ahead.
So, obviously like any entity, salaries are the biggest part of any budget. Who has control on an individual library over those salaries?
The, the wages are determined by the library board and the library boards are appointed by their municipalities. Wisconsin statute allows library boards to have exclusive control of the funding and set the wages for library employees. So, it is, it is up to the library boards to determine those wages.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we'll call the vote. Green to approve. Okay, resolution passes. Move on to resolution 1024.
Resolution 10 dash 24, resolution to authorize funding from the use of American Rescue Fund Act, ARPA funding to pay for mobile and portable radios for the sheriff's department. Now therefore be it resolved that the county administrator is hereby authorized to use Chippewa County's ARPA interest earnings of $95,000 and ARPA contingency of $95,000 to pay for approximately 33 mobile and 37 portable radios for Chippewa County Sheriff's Department by September 30th, 2024.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Studebarg, a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second and silence.
All silence.
Okay, ready?
Yep.
All right. So, there are the next four business items which were originally slated for Randy to talk to you guys about. But he ended up losing his voice this morning, so now I'm just going to.
Oh, thank God.
So, try not to speak too much. I'm wishing it was me. All right. So, this resolution is to fund the replacement of radios for the sheriff's department. If you recall, we had a 2024 CIP. We included $67,000 of sales funding for replacement of radios for the patrol and jail divisions. And on that 2024 and 2028 CIP plan, we had 67,000 slated for '24, '25, and '26. So, that would have been a total of 201,000. So, our plan was, is we were going to do this replacement over a three-year period. And the reason we've been trying to replace these radios is due to the fact that there were some law enforcement agencies that have upgraded radios to a digital transmit, transmit and receive signal. And our radios have issues communicating with them since ours transmit and receive with an analog signal. Now, I want you guys to know, that's more of a technical conversation than I really know. That's my simple version that I understand. And so, really the issue with this is this is causing some concerns for the officer and public safety. The county administrator decided that with the unexpected interest revenues we've been receiving with the ARPA funds invested, that it would be best to get most of the radios, excluding a couple of the jail portable radios, updated so that they are digital, signal compatible. With these radios, the county will be able to transmit and receive digital and analog signals so they can communicate easily with all the agencies. This resolution is requesting that 95% of the available ARPA contingency funds be utilized and 95% of the ARPA interest revenues for a total of 190,000. In January, the sheriff's department management staff got a quote for, to, if we replaced all the radios in their department, it would cost 275,800. Since the CIP has been approved last year and the ARPA resolution has been stated, we received a notice last Thursday that Representative Van Orden secured $100,000 for Chippewa County for the first fiscal year 2024 appropriations package. We are initially planning that that 100,000 will help offset the cost for the 2024 CIP plan that we have in for that first $67,000. Ultimately, we are planning that all of the radios will be replaced for that 275,800 and the funding will be used in this order. We're thinking that we would want to use the Representative Van Orden's funding of $100,000 first, then we would use the ARPA, 190,000 from ARPA funding, and we'd use 67, I'm sorry. It is estimated that the 67,000 for sales tax, we would be refunding it back to the sales tax fund. If you recall, when I talk about that CIP update, I do that a lot. At the end of the year, if we have money left over and it was sales tax funded, we send that money back to the sales tax fund for future projects. And we would have about 14,000, which would be transferred to the highway department contingent upon your approval of resolution 1224 tonight. Sorry, that was a lot, wasn't it? This is a hard one.
Mr. Chairman, my question was actually answered.
Okay.
Supervisor Mueller.
Just a quick one. Now, is this going to be for all of the radios coming or are they going to come in, like a third this year, a third the next year?
No, actually it would be all of them at one time. We would, we would need all of them by September 30th of 2024 so that we can fund or pull it from the ARPA funding.
Excellent. Thank you.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, there you go.
Oh, I, I just wanted to talk because the other two retired police talked about it. So.
That's all he wants.
That's it.
That's it? Short and sweet.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, the one will call the vote. Green to approve, red to disapprove. Resolution passes. Resolution 1124.
Resolution number 11 dash 24, resolution to authorize funding from the American Rescue Fund Act to pay employee longevity rewards. Now therefore be it resolved that the county administrator is hereby authorized to use Chippewa County's ARPA interest earnings to pay longevity bonuses in the amount of $300 for the first five-year anniversary and $800 for every other five-year milestone anniversary missed as of May 1st, 2022 to all eligible employees covered under the longevity bonus policy, including Wisconsin Professional Police Association. And be it further resolved that these bonuses be paid to eligible employees on their April 5th, 2024 paycheck forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Bertrand.
Bertrand, and is there a second?
A second.
McGill seconds. Okay, discussion.
All right. Randy actually included a letter that he had sent to you guys in the packet. Just a couple highlights, you know, we've been working very diligently on employee engagement and our goal is to make Chippewa County the best place to work in the Chippewa Valley. You know, we've been doing a lot of employee engagement activities, you know, from onboarding to exit interviews and in between. We have a staff satisfaction squad that has been very important in our venture with, because they help organize events for our employees to encourage more staff satisfaction. And then on April 13th of 2022, you approved a new policy for the longevity bonuses for our tenured employees. And on employee surveys, there were some feedback that these employees felt Chippewa County was missing our efforts on trying to just recruit for new employees and not looking at anything for the employees who were tenured. And so then we ended up having a resolution, I'm sorry, resolutions 50 dash 22 and 62 dash 22. And that would have been for the general municipal employees and the WPPA employees, which included the LTEs, elected officials, and the county administrator, which paid $200 for every five-year mile, five-year milestone bonus missed, if that makes sense. So, if you were, you were here for five years as of May 1st of 2022, you got $200. As of December 31st of 2023, the ARPA interest earnings were 582,558.50. And then when you reduce it with the resolutions that have already been approved using the interest earnings from ARPA of that 104,943.80, you have unallocated interest earnings of 477,614.70. With this resolution, we're really trying to make whole our active employees who were here as of May 1st. So, that was when the start of the longevity bonus review period began and have at least five years of service. So, with paying that $300 for the five-year milestone anniversary, then 200 from that '22 resolution, that will match the total of the five-year milestone according to longevity policy of $500. And likewise for the 10-year, it would be the same thing. But any years after that for 15 and on down, we're not going any further than that because it's too costly. We can't afford that. The total estimate for this is 299,880 for about 169 employees. Last payroll, we paid 410 employees, which included the LTEs, elected officials, and county administrator. So, about 41% of our eligible, our employees are eligible for this if approved. And then as it was. And then as it was indicated on the resolution, it will be paid on April 5th. And something I just wanted to share, Randy didn't tell me to share this, but I'm gonna share it. I think that if we didn't have the interest revenue that we did with ARPA, I don't think that this would have ever been something we could have ever done. I think we were just using this as a tool to help with our employees. So just so you understand that this wouldn't have probably happened if we couldn't have gotten those great ARPA interest returns. And as of December 31st, of the original $12.5 million of ARPA money that we had invested, our investments are now down to the 5.3 because we've been utilizing the fund. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, that our interest revenues will be going away. So that is all I had.
Ms. Blumberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to explain my extension vote, my wife is currently employed by the county, and I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Anyone else? Hearing seeing none, then we will call the vote. Green to approve, red to disapprove. Ready?
Nope.
We have... A moment's delay here. Now we're ready.
18, yes, 0, no, one abstain.
Okay, resolution passes. Resolution 1224.
Resolution 12-24, Resolution to authorize the use of remaining American Rescue Plan Act funds and interest revenues to the Highway Department for the 2024 capital improvement road construction projects. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby authorize the reallocation of any available funds from the projects listed below as of September 30th, 2024, to the Highway Department on December 1st, 2024, to be used to fund 2024 capital improvement road construction projects, public firearms range, lead, and EPA remediation, new bathroom showers, Otter Lake Park, new bathroom new well, Pine Point Park, replace picnic tables, 30 of them at Pine Point, Otter Lake, Round Lake, Moore's Ericson, automatic firewood dispensers, Pine Point, Otter Lake, Moore's Ericson, contamination mitigation and residential well, CVIC remodel conference room for ADA compliance, employee longevity rewards, mobile and portable radios for Sheriff's Department, and be it further resolved that any available ARPA-generated interest as of November 30th, 2024 also be allocated to the Highway Department on December 1st, 2024 to be used to fund 2024 capital improvement road construction projects forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Go ahead.
A second.
And Buck, for the second. Okay, discussion.
All right. So this resolution is being brought forward to you guys due to the ARPA regulations regarding the U.S. Treasury. So remember, if you recall, we actually incorporated some of that language into the ARPA guidelines that was passed by the county board in 2021, and it was updated again in February of 2022. The guidelines state that by March of 2024, that any ARPA funds allocated to a project with an expectation that the project went complete, that we would reallocate those funds if we deemed it appropriate. And then the guidelines also stated that the county administrator was required to bring forth a resolution to the county board before he could reallocate any funds. So we're just doing this as a process to bring it forward to you guys. The main reason why we are really doing this is we don't want to lose any funding. The U.S. Treasury is requiring that at the end of 2024, any funds not spent must be considered by 1231 of 2024. We must consider them obligated to a certain project. So for example, how the U.S. Treasury would define this, what obligation means to them, is that if we obligate $100,000 to a project, but we only spend $90,000 of that project for that project, that $10,000 has to go back to the U.S. Treasury. So I don't know about you, but we don't want to give money back because we want to spend it here. We chose to transfer any excess funds to the Highway Department because that department keeps the funds for future road improvements. So anytime that they do CIP, that any money they have stays in their contingency fund for future road projects, or if they have overage for a road because, you know, sometimes they have other issues. As of February 29th, if all the projects spent exactly what they allocated for the projects, we would transfer the $79,960.50 of the remaining contingency funds and $130,025.79 of interest earnings that switches unallocated, including all the resolutions that you have approved, so that we would have a total of $209,986.29 right now would go to the Highway Department as of February 29th. But we anticipate that some of the other projects might come in under two. Like, so the rifle range, we know that's gonna be... We're estimating it may be $200,000 that we'll get back. If you recall, we did $1 million for that project. Right now, we're on the... Looking for the... We got final bids for the reclamation, so that's what we're working on next. So we just opened them, we don't know all the numbers for sure, but we're getting close. And most of the other projects, I think, are gonna be very minimal because it seems like they're spending exactly what they anticipate to spend. So I would anticipate if the rifle range came in where it is, I think it's gonna be right around between the $400,000 to $500,000 range that's gonna be transferred back to the Highway Department. And roughly, that's gonna be about two miles of road that will be funded. And I want to make sure that everybody knows that this resolution does exclude broadband and that it also includes those other resolutions for longevity and the Sheriff's Department radios.
Any questions? Pete?
One question, guys. So when all these expenditures are done, will that ARPA money, that's the end of the account?
Yes.
At some point this year?
Yes, the plan is, is as long as we can get the broadband all paid out. As of 1231, when I give you the... When I give you the 2024 year-end financial information, that fund will be closed out. It will be zero. That's in my perfect world. We're really just contingent upon broadband. All of the other projects that are listed there, I have no qualms that it's all gonna be good. It's just the broadband question, just to make sure that they all get done on time.
Any other questions? Seeing none, then we will call the vote. Green to approve, red to disapprove. Chuck, your button didn't take.
Keep hitting it.
Sometimes they get stuck.
Should I step on it and cuss, or what? We need new buttons. Not... Flip up a target, it's like we trap shooting.
I'm gonna say please.
I can't hit it, it hurts.
Well, I can change the battery so that I'm...
Battery would just die right there.
Again, just like table TV here, stay tuned, we have technical difficulties.
Although, yeah, if that helps.
Not have that.
Okay.
Now we can... 19, yes, 0, no.
Resolution passes. And we're at number five. So I need a motion to approve the ARPA plan amended. McGee makes motion. And Flader, second. Discussion.
I guess the only thing I would say is the only... The changes that are listed there are shown in yellow there, and it's just based off of the resolutions that you just previously approved, okay?
Any discussion? Okay, we will call the vote. Green to approve, red to disapprove.
See how quick I was that time?
19, yes, 0, no.
Okay, resolution passes. And we'll move on to Resolution 1324.
Resolution number 13-24, Resolution to authorize the acquisition of land for addition to the county forest to authorize the application for state grant funds. Now therefore be it resolved that the Land Conservation and Forest Management Department is hereby authorized to pursue purchase of the following described property for $104,000 with funding as set out above. I'm not gonna read all of the things. Be it further resolved that the county forest administrators authorized to apply for the grant funding available from the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources under the Knolls-Nelson stewardship land acquisition grant program for up to $52,000 to help fund the purchase of the property, and be it further resolved that Chippewa County will comply with all rules of the Knolls-Nelson stewardship land acquisition grant program and meet the financial obligations under the grant, and be it further resolved that the county forest administrators further authorize to sign all necessary documents and take any necessary actions to undertake direct and complete acquisition of the property forwarded to the county board by the Land Conservation and Forest Management.
Okay, Flader's motion, is there a second? Peterson, seconds. Discussion.
This has been in the pipeline for a while, as you guys all know. County government moves pretty slowly, so this has been two years in the works. He originally came to us and there wasn't state grant funding available because of the competitiveness of that program. Came back to us again, offered to donate essentially 30% of the purchase price of the property. We thought that sounded pretty good, so we went back to the state and asked if there was grant funding available this time. They said there was, so we are attempting to apply for those monies to acquire this property for 20 cents on the dollar for the county. If you can just scroll down real quick, there's a map of the property. So this is out in the Ruby Unit. And if you could scroll down a little bit more, that locates you where you're at, and that shows you the property. You can see about the third of the property is upland Aspen productive timberland. The other two-thirds is wetlands, which will protect water quality and provide for improved water quality over time. And all the rights of public access that come along with county forests. Fishing, trapping, skiing. There's a couple I missed, right?
Close enough. Glenn?
This is within the county forest block, correct?
It is, that's right. There's a county forest blocking boundary which determines where we're available to apply for stewardship funding in order to acquire properties. It's a policy document that both the committee and the county board approve going through our planning process, which outlines where we should be thinking about acquiring property and where we shouldn't necessarily be thinking about it. And this is within the blocking boundary. You can see the lighter blue is the blocking boundary on the north side, and I probably should have used different colors. But the darker blue is... shows different timber stands, different types of productivity.
So not a real lot of productive forest.
A third of it, a third of it's productive.
And it's a total of 80 acres, correct?
That's correct. Split into twenties.
Yeah, just how much is coming off the tax force?
I don't know the exact amount of the property tax that would be coming off, but I can tell you if you believe in public fishing, access, hunting rights, this is the best bargain you're ever gonna get because we turn more money to those townships than any other program that provides those rights.
I understand. You know, I mean, return the money.
You can look up the tax bill online.
Well, thank you.
Small.
Supervisor Gary.
Just a comment as a committee member, you know, who's discussed in committee to length, and this is a win-win situation for Chippewa County.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, then we will call the vote. Clerk is ready. And she is ready. Green to approve, red to disapprove.
Release.
Thank you.
19, yes, 0, no.
Okay, resolution passes. Okay, we'll move on to ordinances. Ordinance 424, this is second reading. Do I hear a motion to approve? Berg? Is there a second?
Second, Bertrand.
Yep, second reading, I guess. I'm just here to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Okay. Seeing none, then we will call the vote as soon as the screen comes up. There we are. Green to approve, red to disapprove.
19, yes, 0, no.
Ordinance passes. Ordinance 524.
Again, this is a second reading, so I'm here for there's any questions or any amendments.
Seeking motion to approve? She meant moves to approve. Is there a second? Okay, discussion.
Okay, I would, the part where it talks about the maximum proclaim. To me, this is woefully inadequate at the cost of livestock today, and we basically get very few of, most years we have no claims on it, so it's not an issue of not having enough money. I believe we should just strike the language of the maximum of one thousand dollars per claim, and that would be my motion to amend by striking the words "up to a maximum of one thousand dollars per claim."
A motion made and seconded to amend. Yeah, Flader seconded. So now we will, if there's any discussion on the amendment. Supervisor Tutterberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could, could I have an explanation of the process if a animal livestock were to be harmed by a dog or injured by a dog, let's say killed? Is there, is a claim made to the county or explain the process, just so I'm clear as to how, what they're saying?
Do you want, you two want to do it or I do it? I can do it.
Head and explain.
Okay, if, if there's an instance, it has to be, if there's a ownership of the animal that does, the dog that does the damage is known, that falls back on that owner. If the ownership of the dog is not known, then they file a claim with the county. The board has to approve it. And if that person filing the claim has a dog, it needs to be licensed. If that dog's not licensed, you're not eligible to file a claim on it.
Okay, so, okay, I see. Thank you.
Any other questions? Vice Burdron.
Just for clarification, I know we talked about this a lot and exec. So say we, so this has not been historically used a whole lot. Let's say all of a sudden it does become used. We say we, we are only, we could only pay out to the total amount of the funds in that budget. We would never be liable for dollars above and beyond what's collected through the fee process, correct?
I, can I comment? I read statute one seventy-four eleven today, and it said we would not be.
Not be liable. And then if they did exceed, they would get paid out in the ratio of the value of their claims would be prorated in terms of if, if we, you know, only have eighty percent of the money claimed, it would get split out evenly amongst the value of the claim, and it would be made whole, but they would get a ratio of their pot, of the pot essentially. Do I understand that correctly?
That's my belief. It doesn't exactly say that in the ordinance, but that would be logical. And it's up to the county board to approve the claims. So if you get a big claim, you could say, well, hold it to the end of the year and see if any more come in. That would be up to the board at that time, I would say. It would be the board's prerogative how to handle that. Nothing gets done without approval of the board payment.
Some of the, if you look at, they'll be, some of the claims, they'll go through the UW Extension Office, not just through the board. And then that would get brought to the board. We work with them to, to set the amounts.
Supervisor Mueller.
Would, would the Extension Office be part of whoever assesses the value of the claim? Like, is that how that would work?
For example, the last time we had an actual animal claim that I could find was like in two thousand fourteen, where a dog killed a calf, and the owners of the calf requested five hundred dollars. The extension, who we worked with the extension, valued it then at three hundred dollars, and so then that's what the county ended up paying out. Yes, two thousand fourteen for a claim like that. Most of the claims that we get now, and that we don't have very often, it's usually stray dogs, like biting a person, but that's different than this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That was my question is, are, just how often do we get claims?
Like I said, when I went back looking for like actual damage claim like that, it was two thousand fourteen.
Fourteen was just that one? That was the only one you could find in the last?
And I've only, I've been here since two thousand seventeen, and we've not had anything in there except for dog or cat bites.
Okay, and then supervisor, how much does a cow cost? I have no idea.
Well, that's a loaded question.
Very Wisconsin question.
It, it can vary greatly, anywhere from fifteen hundred to probably twenty-five, twenty-eight hundred would be a commercial beef cow. Dairy cows are going to be priced probably less, but there's very few dairy cows on pasture anymore. Feeder calves, it was, it's not uncommon to hear values of, in the last year or two, twelve to sixteen hundred dollars in the fall. I've been hearing newborn calves going through the sale barn, beef calves, a thousand dollars apiece lately. There's not, that's not common, but it's happened, so.
Any other questions? So we would be voting on the amendment first. So to approve for the amendment, you'd push green, to disapprove for the amendment, you'd press red.
Seventeen, yes, two, no.
Amendment passes. And then back to the original ordinance. Okay, it's back to original ordinance to amend the section regarding dog license fund. Green to approve, red to disapprove.
Nineteen, yes, zero, no.
Okay, ordinance passes. Okay, ordinance six twenty-four, ordinance to re-appeal and recreate section fifty-eight dash thirty-nine of the Chippewa County ordinances regarding ATV, UTV routes. First reading.
Well, back in two thousand seventeen, we started this process with a formed ATV advisory committee, and we opened up twenty-seven point seven miles, based on the safety of the route with multiple factors weighing into it. We were asked by Highway Committee in May of twenty-three to go back and look at using the average daily traffic counts instead of the previous method. So by using the seven hundred and fifty ADT, we were based solely on average traffic counts daily. That's just one of the many critical factors we used to use. For the seven hundred and fifty ATD, we'd be looking at opening up three hundred and twenty-six miles, which is pretty much exactly two-thirds of our county road miles. Although three hundred and twenty-six, four point four miles are over the seven hundred and fifty count, but they're open just because their grandfather did. They're ones that we had previously brought in under the previous methods. Those sections would be County M in New Auburn, County M from double C to twenty-seven, County Y from State one seventy-eight to one hundred and forty-third Avenue in Jim Falls. So at this point, if you guys were to approve the seven hundred and fifty count, we're ready to go with the sign order. We can have them ordered tomorrow. We've been assured pretty close to a twenty-eight day turnaround on our signs, so we could have, start installing them on or around April twenty-second. We would be done by early April, I mean, early May, maybe mid-May. The Highway Department, just in general, recommends the seven hundred and fifty ADT. It's the safest alternative to the existing ordinance. We also encourage use of lower volume town roads whenever possible to lessen the chance of encounters with large motor vehicles. There are, in this setup here, there are sixty in routes that are in the cities, towns, and villages that right now they would not be open, that we would bail open them if those municipalities so choose they want to do that. It'd be very simple for us to go back and do that. And again, just from our standpoint, safety is our priority. We figure any accident that occurs out there is one too many. I don't know, Chair, do we want to have Deputy Deslinger comment?
Yes.
At this point? Hunter, would you mind commenting on your recommendation?
Listening to a lot of the community.
You could come, use the microphone so you can hear you a little better. Some of us are getting hard of hearing, so.
Listening to a lot of the community, there is a lot of enforcement, a lot of people wanting to open these roads that we're looking at here. Of course, for the Sheriff's Department, safety is also our number one concern. I, I do have some concerns with some of the amendments that we're talking about, such as like upping the speeds. However, again, it's, I understand. I understand the, the number of ATVs and UTVs that are on the roadways I'm seeing are just increasing yearly, and honestly even monthly. It's this year already with the lack of snow, I've been seeing ATVs and UTVs on the roadway every month, even in the middle of January when we've never really seen them on the roadways before, so. I understand and I support if these are all voted in. I understand if there are still concerns with, with some of them through your board, through the board members here. That's really all I have at this time.
Question of him?
We take questions. Excuse me. Tutterberg, Pete.
No, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead, Pete, and then Rob.
I just had a question of him.
Yes.
So I'm not sure if I understood exactly everything you said. Some of it, but, so what, what is your recommendation for count number? Did you say that at all?
Yes, for the, the seven fifty count, I accept it. I, I am okay with it at this point. My understanding is, is it can always be upped in coming years. I think if we're going to raise the, if we're going to open roads and raise the counts, I think this is the appropriate way to do it, is to take steps versus just going from the five fifty to a wide-open roadway system within the county. So I, I support going from where we were to this. This will give us an idea, you know, over the next year, if crashes continue to rise, if there's a, a larger concern that continues with this. Obviously, we'll be able to reflect on it through the numbers and talk about it again next year. But I think this is an appropriate way to do it, is to take steps forward.
Supervisor Tutterberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd, I'd ask Randy, but he can't answer the question. Do we have an insurance liability with this from the county?
It's Todd.
We run that by our insurance company and our outside attorneys. They've looked at our draft, they've looked at all the state rules compared with our ordinance, and, you know, there, there's several areas of law that allow us, you know, some sort of security in that regard. It wouldn't be any different than it is now, let's just say.
There's no increased liability, obviously.
No, it would all depend on the factual circumstances.
But the county's actions tonight would not incur any additional liability of above and beyond. That's what already is.
It's solely my passage.
Thank you.
Joel, silence.
I just want to thank everybody for working on this, getting it to the board in a timely manner. I do, you know, have a couple of concerns just because I am in the township of Weeden, but I do support the seven fifty. I would, would have liked to seen it up to a thousand, but it's a stepping stone, you know, to go, but it pretty much excludes all Weeden for us, so we really are not going to get much for routes, only on the western side of our routes. And I happen to live on a road that's pretty busy, and I know it's only busy for a certain time during the day. And at a thousand, I'm hoping we can revisit it in a year or so down the line to see what the activity is like, because that's really only, you know, forty-two vehicles an hour if you do the math on it. That's, I live on, when I travel, much more than that, and I see people biking, hiking, jogging, walking their dogs on it, and we're, I'm on a road that'll never meet any criteria, but I really appreciate all you guys' time, and I hope the board will really look to help the UTV clubs to get some routes going and get the seven fifty passed and looked at, look at up again maybe in the future.
Chuck Bomar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions. I'm generally in favor of this. I commend the organizations for all of the work they've done, and of all of the issues I've seen in two years, I have hands down seen more public input on this issue than any issue that we have had dealt with. That said, I'm concerned with safety, given my own experiences in the northern counties in Wisconsin, and having almost been hit and almost having hit an ATV. Is there, I want to hear more about the security, the safety that's out there and the extra costs that the Sheriff's Department might encumber because of this. And secondly, the speeding tickets, there was a comment there about speeding tickets, and I was a bit confused. A, do the, do we get a speeding ticket? Do you actually get points on your driver's license?
No.
It's just a fine, and therefore explaining why it's actually cheaper to get a speeding ticket on your ATV than it is in your vehicle on the same road, which I'm not very excited about. And then, second, I would like to hear from all of these ATV agent groups about self-governance. They, they need to be responsible and make sure that they're managing their, their group. I mean, they can't be, they need to be talking to people and working the crowds, and I think they have that capacity and that, that they will, but I just wanted to state that, so thank you.
Peter Gary.
Yes, so I was a member of the committee, and everyone here as voters, I just want to point out that our vote was three to two, so it was close. There was a lot of discussion, and I think we all received some additional information from that time. I voted in favor of the seven fifty, but I think everyone here needs to look at the totality of it and vote the way you feels right. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As most everybody here knows, I tend to look at things here in these matters from a law enforcement perspective, and my concern is, are the guys, the deputies that actually have to do the patrolling, are they up to speed on how this is going to affect their routine? Like, I know that, for example, you know, when you work accident reports, how do they get, you know, configured into a way of looking at this to gauge what, how effective this ordinance is? You know, I mean, the guys out there that actually have to do the work, you know, I, I worked many accidents, but, you know, I just, I'm just concerned that, you know, I, and I appreciate the groups, that, the ATV groups that, that have their membership, and, you know, you, you can't legislate common sense. You just got to try to talk common sense to people, so. My concern is, I just want to make sure that we keep a handle on this as best we can. I realize you've got a large plate with a lot of stuff on it, but this is just one more item, a concern that can maybe just by statistics, we can, you know, as long as they're good statistics, so, you know, so anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted one clarification.
I just wanted one clarification. You'd mentioned that all previously approved routes were grandfathered in. I'm assuming that this map is not representing any of the routes that the towns did via their own ordinance when they're, you know, more than 35 miles now or less. That's not documenting this. Like, I'm seeing the County Highway Cape Bridge is red going from Hanson to Lafayette. It doesn't even...
That's not part, that doesn't impact that.
Okay, so...
Red, red.
Yeah, that's just, that's just county.
That's just the county.
Yep.
Nothing changes what the towns have opened up to this point. What they have...
Right, yeah. This is, this map that you're looking at right now, that's just the county highway.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm definitely there supporting this, but I'm also thinking that it's been worked on a long time, been a lot of hours and effort put into this. So, and I hate to feel like I'm passing the buck to somebody else, not me, but, you know, on the job.
No puns intended.
No puns intended. So anyway, I don't know when we can insert this, but I would like to say this don't have the second reading. First reading's enough. So we can pass it and not hand it over to the next county board.
Right, so...
On the floor.
Okay, yes. You would have to make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second reading, which would take a two-thirds vote.
Okay, I amend, I'd like to amend it and eliminate the second reading.
No. It's a motion.
Not have the second reading and suspend the rules and have just one vote now after the first reading.
Okay. So there's been a motion made. Is that right? Oh, there's no debate.
But we'll need a second.
We need a second, though. Okay, so Buck made the motion. Is there a second to suspending the rules?
Because we had to take it down for the motion on the floor.
So the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I didn't quite get what his motion was here, ressuspending a second reading on it. Is that what the first motion will be?
Right, right. So then the vote would be tonight.
It would delay everything for the UTV.
No, no, actually...
This is tonight now. We can vote on it tonight if we suspend it.
Okay, so we'll be able to vote on that?
Tonight.
750.
I just wanted to make sure.
We're suspending the second reading.
Okay. Any other discussion? Then we will vote on suspending the second reading, voting on this, green to approve, red to disapprove.
I can release?
Yep, you can release.
19, yes, 0, no.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules passes. Further discussion on the ordinance? Any further discussion?
One question, Mr. Chair. So is there a mechanism if there's a short stretch of road somewhere, it's a mile or two, that's over the 750 threshold in order to make a connect with something, that that could be, that would be a simple ordinance amendment or what down the road? Hasn't that been thought of or discussed?
I'm going to apologize, I really can't answer that question.
I'm going to call on Glenn because it's a question in committee.
The application can be made and, you know, take it to the committee.
Just like in the past.
Just like it was before.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Hawkins?
Yeah, just to play on what Mr. Steele was talking about, there's been a lot of time spent on this, a lot of time. A lot of people that we're supposed to represent come here every week and ask, where are we? What's going on? What's happening? We go back and tell them the same thing. We're working on it, we're trying to get it in, but it doesn't do any good. It's, it just sits there, and then we get something that we think's halfway decent, it gets blown away. It's just ongoing time after time after time. I just hope whoever comes in here does something that, wherever they can, to make this thing change. Because it's, it's, to be honest, it's a, to me, it's a joke, because we keep working on this and working... Jim's put a lot of time into this. Jim has a nice presentation that you'll probably never see. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I... One click for me, can I?
Oh, yes, quit. Another battery.
I'm also a member of the Highway Committee, and we've worked for two years on this, back and forth, back and forth, trying to figure out what's going to work. And I guess I look at it this way, Highway Commissioner has put a lot of time and effort into this. We hire smart people and let them tell us what to do, and I think this is a case where this really is exemplified. I know that prime directive here is safety, and I think that's what's been really taken into consideration. I fully support this, fully support this. We've, we've researched this six weeks from Sunday over the last two years. I don't know how we can do any more research in regards to it, so I'm in full agreement with it as a Highway Committee member.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a statement and then just a quick question. The statement is, I'm definitely in favor of this. Oftentimes, when conversations come up regarding economic development, we always ask the question, what can we do for the rural communities? How do we help continue to support established businesses? When you look at our county, we have almost a half dozen dealers, more than two dozen small engine repair shops and aftermarket parts dealers, countless lonely gas stations in the countryside, and obviously then the hospitality industry with the hotels, restaurants, and bars. If you're looking for a way to support the rural economy, this is a good start with that, so I'm definitely in favor of it. And then my question would be, just for schematics, we had the motion to suspend, and do we still need a motion to approve before we vote? That's, I wasn't sure where our conversation was specifically at here. Do we actually have it on the floor?
There's no motion and second.
Someone will need to make a motion.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're at... That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Supervisor Peterson?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance change.
Okay, is there a second? And Supervisor, second seconds. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Then we will call the vote. Those in favor of ordinance 724, press your green button. What'd they say? 624, 624. Green to approve, red to disapprove. Thank you very much. Okay, ordinance 724. Ordinance mention 260, C to 2-22, 20B. This would be first reading. I guess I get to read. I don't have it in front of me. Simply, simply put, this is just designating our Chippewa County Administrator and Chippewa County Board as the contact people for non-government organizations like World Relief. Underneath the federal law, they are required to contact government official when they are planning a resettlement, and this just defines who that contact be. So...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, it's first readings.
Thank you.
Well...
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll make a motion to waive.
Waive the second.
I'm going to waive, yeah, waive the second reading so they have this enacted more sooner than later.
Then a motion to waive second reading. Is there a second? Supervisor Sikorsky, second sit. So we will need a two-thirds vote. Are you ready, Jackie? Yeah, just make sure. So in favor, press the green. Not in favor, press red.
19, yes, 0, no.
Okay, ordinance passes. Or, excuse me, no, the second reading is waived. Now we got to get to...
At this point, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
There we go.
Thank you.
I keep looking at that clock, I should be looking at this. Okay, Joel Seidt, seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, green to approve, red to disapprove. Glenn, your button hasn't gone. Okay, ordinance passes. Now, let's see. So this is a tricky one now. Okay, so number 11 is a little different than we're used to, so I'm going to have corporate coaching elbow down this one, because this is, it's a request for the current county board to make a recommendation to the incoming county board supervisors regarding security for the Chippewa County courthouse. Randy's unable to talk on this, so we talked at length at this in the executive committee Looking at the different options that are available, we were looking at what we call the hybrid option, which is the two security officers, and then we would have, the east door would be a closed door. And so then people could enter from the front doors and the side doors, so we'd have four doors open. And so this is, this is not the entire security thing, this is basically just the start as to where we want to go and to initiate conversation. So that's what the exec committee had kind of lined up on that. Are there any questions or comments? Anybody from the exec committee want to make any further statements on it? Tutterberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this passed 5-0 through exec, correct? This option did, if I'm understanding that correctly. What's the budgetary impact to adding another security officer?
If you recall, in the 2024 budget, we actually put $225,000 in there for two security officers. So that would be the security officers, including equipment, and that would be a total of three security officers plus Mark, who we currently have as a security officer.
There's nothing above and beyond, is there?
Yeah, because if you recall, we didn't know what we were going to do, so we just wanted to put it as a placeholder because we weren't sure what we were going to do.
Thank you.
So if there's any ideas or thoughts, I look at our law enforcement community in here, thoughts on it. This is a starting point, and if you want to think on this sometime, you can also contact Administrator. Supervisor Berger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just kind of a Cliff Notes version of what was discussed exactly. The reason kind of for the hybrid is that, obviously, the conversation always kind of came back to that single point of entry, and it was just decided that A, it's financially going to be significant, and B, it's cumbersome. I mean, this is still the people's house, we don't want this to feel, we don't want there to be obstacles to access, you know, the everyday functions. But the hybrid, there's, you know, one door in particular, like the chair said, really causes problems from a security perspective, so it's more of a somewhere in between, the slightly enhanced security, and then just plugging people through different points, but not one point, so that, you know, eyes, easier to keep eyes on and easier for response and such as that. So that's really why the hybrid seemed like the, went to that. It's more cost-effective, but I think it's an improvement from where we're at currently.
Yeah, and I would add on to, because I've actually looked at it, so with those two officers, they can actually cover all four of those entryways from one location. Peter Gearing?
Okay, so if I understood what she said was that there was budgeted for three, but the recommendations for one additional, is that correct?
Yes, at this time, that is what is the, the plan.
Then, then I have to voice a disagreement with that. Anybody in law enforcement knows that if you're going to confront something like this, granted, it may not happen very often, all it takes is one time. No one officer should be involved in that, and you're not going to have those two officers together all the time, so if somebody has to come from the other side of the building, it could be too late. I don't think just one additional is enough to do the job that you're talking about. If this is the proposal, adding people, I don't think the addition of one is enough.
Yes.
I think your question didn't get answered the way it should have. There's one currently and there's two more budgeted.
Okay.
That's not what you asked. What you asked didn't get answered correctly.
There were three additions to the one.
No. There would be a total of three as budgeted now.
But the proposal only asks for one in addition to what we have.
Not necessarily. I don't. That's not the way I understood it.
Okay, well, yeah.
But that is why I...
No common stance, thank you.
I believe Randy's looking for a motion here, and I'd like to move...
Just a minute, Mr. Schmidt. So before we go on to that, is there anything from the group that you think should be changed? I think we, Mr. Gearing says he thought three people would be better. So the, the executive committee, you know, put forward the hybrid, which has the additional officers, but it also has a lockdown, so we don't have all doors, but it doesn't have single entry. So I guess I would also be looking for, seeking a motion to, to go along the executive committee's direction, or if somebody else has something else that they think is better. Yes, Mr. Schmidt, are you trying to make a motion?
Yes, I was. I would like to move that we recommended the incoming board to follow the fourth option that the executive committee put forward as a hybrid model, closing one door and hiring a couple officers, as a rough blueprint for future plans.
I think Mr. Schmidt might have just answered my question. This is just a recommendation, right?
I'll second that before we go. It's got to be said.
But this is just going to be a recommendation, they can still look at the other options, the other board, right? So this is just a recommendation. Then my other question is, even with the single door entry, we have to add additional staffing, right? Because you usually have two people at the door for that, so we're going to have that added expense, do we? Just wanted to make...
It'd be the same either way.
Right, so...
Personnel expense.
Dean Mueller?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a little clarification, I guess. We were talking, I think, I think there might have been some confusion thrown in here with the two or three officers. We're talking two scheduled officers daily, not three, correct? Or am I wrong there?
Well, okay, so there, it's different, this is different than what's budgeted. We currently have budgeted one, we currently have Mark Hollister, who is our current security officer. This right here is just saying another security officer. But in the budget, we have for, place for even another one, so we would have for two.
But in the budget, we have for, place for even another one, so we'd have for two. So we'd have a total for three, Mark and two additional. But this recommendation right there, I would say, is Mark and one additional. That's how I would read it.
You just confused me a little more. I'm sorry. It must be the Norwegian in me, I don't know. You're talking, you know, what we're talking basically is two officers assigned in a workday, correct? Or are we talking three? That's, I know you're talking three positions, but two is what we're talking about scheduling, correct? Or aren't we that far yet? I see, okay.
Right.
I'll throw out my question, thank you.
Yeah, we're not quite that far yet, Dean.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could I put Deputy House here on the spot? Would that be all right? What are your thoughts about this proposed plan, since you're the primary person?
I would gladly take more help. I'm normally the only one here. I'm normally not here the entire time the courthouse is always open. I do get vacation, I do have to have training days out here. When I'm not here, there's investigators maybe around, but they could be out on something too, to where then it's the city that comes and helps. I wish I had the numbers, but I know that my calls and my, people using me more is way up this year. And it's just getting worse and worse every day with DHS, TPRs, which is termination of parental rights and everything. I'm busier and more and more every day, so I gladly take the help, and I think it's, it's definitely, it's not that we wouldn't use it, use the help. I mean, we have three courtrooms going all the time. Most of the time, I'm sitting in the hallway listening because somebody's arguing in one and there's stuff going on in the other one. I can only be in one of the three at a time, so that, is that every day? Absolutely not. Monday, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, those are my busiest days, if you've ever seen me up there. You know, definitely the days I need help. And there's other stuffs that we can do, you know, during our off times also.
So this plan as a whole, you would support this hybrid fourth option as brought forward?
I would support anything that gives us additional services to help the public here.
Lori, as I understand it correctly, this plan is calling for one more for a total of two, but we have a possibility of upping total of three. This plan is calling for just one more.
That is correct. And actually, at the next legal and law committee meeting, you are, you are gonna see a resolution for one of the security officers.
Security officers.
So, I mean, at this point, that's what we're going for, is one for sure, of the two extra that were budgeted. Because we have Mark budgeted in there, but we had two extra open positions, and so that's what we would have to bring forward, a resolution to the county board to be approved in order before a resolution, before the position can be filled.
And then final point of clarification, this is not a resolution, we're moving forward with this, but a recommendation to present this to the next county board to move forward.
That is correct.
A little unusual, but that's what we're trying to do here. And then remember, this is a facility-wide plan. This isn't just for second floor, this will be for the entire facility, so there's a lot of moving parts yet to put in, so.
Mr. Chair.
So.
Yes? I'm on board.
Can't look at both at the same time. Okay, go ahead.
I think we're getting more in the weeds than we need to tonight. This is more of a recommendation to Randy as to what to pursue, that we're not interested in a single point of entry at this time, and to go with the so-called hybrid version to partially go to that step to make it easier to secure. I don't think the other details are really important tonight. It's just if this body wants to go to a single point, you need to say something tonight because going forward, this is a recommendation going to the next board, that we do not go to a single point of entry at this time. That's, that's the way I view this, and I think that's what Randy probably wants, so.
Anyone else? Hearing none, then we will call the vote. When it comes up here, green to approve, red to disapprove.
Nineteen, yes, zero, no.
All righty. Two more items here. One is county administrator appointments. I would seek a motion to approve the county administrator appointments for the local emergency planning. Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? In favor, press green. It was not red.
Nineteen, yes, zero, no.
Okay, so before we have our usual motion, I guess I'll say a few words and pass. So it's, it's been a pleasure to serve Chippewa County and to work with each and every one of you here. As I think said the first day a lot of you came here, this is like a puzzle and you're all a piece, and the real picture doesn't come together until all those pieces come together and fit. And I look at night and what we were able to accomplish, this puzzle has worked very well, and I thank you. I want to just introduce you. My wife is here, the person who has put up with me running all over. Peg, would you stand up, please? She's chased me all around the state of Wisconsin, so I'm very blessed. I look around this room, I hate to say this, I remember when Lori came, and Lisa came, a lot of our staff. When I came back to Chippewa County, my office was in the courthouse here, and so I've seen a lot of change over the years, a lot of boards. If somebody would ask me back then if I'd be on the county board, I'm going, you couldn't drag me to be on the county board. But public service has been my life, and I was talking to one of our legislators today, and I started, I started in public service actually in 1976, and have been in public service in some fashion till tonight. And it's been a joy. It's been a pleasure. I've seen a lot of things that I never, as a young man, ever guessed I would be seeing. Started out as a park police officer at Brunel Allen State Park, and had the fortune, or if you want to call it that, to get caught in a tornado. Two hundred people were in the park that day, and with the help of Mike Kuhn, myself and him, we were able to get those people into safety, and not one person was even injured. Someone was looking out for us. And as I look through my career, I served as a city police officer, became a conservation warden, spent most of my time dealing with people with guns, been around the state of Wisconsin, been around the nation, working with different law enforcement agencies and different details, and it's always been great to come back home to Chippewa County. This is a great place to live, and for those of you who are staying on, I thank you. You don't know how dearly you're needed. Right now, we're looking at this issue with these hospitals closing. This is, I've been working this twenty-four, seven, just about, as we try to plug the holes in the dyke. If Randy could talk, he would tell you how much of a burden this has been on us. Been down to Madison four times, which is interesting, because that's where I started my DNR career, was Madison. From there, I went to Milwaukee, so I guess I went from bad to worse, I don't know, or worse to bad. Came up to Jackson County, and from Jackson County, I went up to Sawyer County, and in Sawyer County, I came back to Chippewa, came back home. Being in public service for the people of Chippewa County's been the greatest pleasure of my life. Thank you. Hope to see you all. I will not be sitting up here, and you know what? I only use this maybe three or four times. And that's because of the caliber of people we have. Thank you. And Mr. Erickson, it's your turn.
Erickson will make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Green to approve.
If tonight is your last night, you can take your nameplate home, but just leave the holder.
The holder.
The holder, I need the holder.
Beat, beat, beat.
Peter?
Press your button. Press your button, keeping us in session here.
All right. Nineteen, yes, zero, no.
Hey, we're done.
Have a good, good afterboard. Good time. I know we've been long, expected one another, so I appreciate that.